Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October 4th, 2016 at 6:30 PM with the Palm Coast City Hall for a regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All call please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shipley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember DiLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Nobiel is excused.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is the approval of the September 20th City Council Business Minutes, the September 21st City Council Special Meeting Minutes, and the September 27th City Council Workshop Minutes. Is there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognized in the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League. Mr. DiLorenzo.
Proclamation. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by numerous problems associated with illicit drugs, drug use, and those that traffic in them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle; and whereas governments and community leaders know the citizen's support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities; whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique "Kiki" Camarena, a drug enforcement administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference; whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts; whereas October 23rd through the 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2016 as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Palm Coast, and urge all citizens to join us in this special observance. Signed this fourth day of October, 2016, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Governor Kucinman, and the Young Marines would like to tell you a little bit about Red Ribbon Week. The Red Ribbon Campaign is now the oldest and largest drug prevention program in the nation, reaching millions of young people during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through October 31st each year. The National Family Partnership is the national sponsor of the Red Ribbon Campaign. We are helping citizens across the country come together to keep children, families, and communities safe, healthy, and drug-free through parent training, networking, and sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign.
The Red Ribbon Campaign started when drug traffickers in Mexico City murdered DEA agent Kiki Camarena in 1985. This began continuing to dish and explain Red Ribbons as a symbol of intolerance towards abuse of drugs. The mission of Red Ribbon Campaign is to make a visible commitment towards the use of drugs in America. It is an ideal way for people and communities to unite and take a visible stand against drugs. Show your personal commitment to a drug-free lifestyle through the symbol of Red Ribbon Week.
[inaudible]
See Council, if you don't want to for a photo? Excellent. One more? He's here to check the work. Very good. Thank you.
Great job.
You don't have this on your agenda, but we do have a proclamation 2A, which is an emergency proclamation. Whereas on October 3rd, 2016, by executive order number 16-230, Governor Rick Scott declared a state of emergency for every county in the state of Florida due to the pending major Hurricane Matthew; and whereas the National Weather Service expects Hurricane Matthew will have significant impacts on the east coast of Florida; and whereas Hurricane Matthew poses a severe threat to the entire state of Florida and requires timely precautions that are taken to protect the communities, critical infrastructure, and the general welfare of the state; and whereas the city determines that in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the city and its residents, and to enable the city to respond to and recover from the effects of Hurricane Matthew, it is necessary to waive the procedures and formalities otherwise required of the city; and whereas the city charter, Section 5, City Council Subsection 4, Powers and Duties of the Mayor, and Section 23-54 of the City Code of Ordinances empowers the Mayor to declare a state of emergency exists within the city consistent with Chapter 252 Florida statutes; and whereas Section 252.38-3, Closed Per End Florida statutes, provides authority for local governments such as the city of Palm Coast to take actions in emergency situations and to waive the procedures and formalities otherwise required of political subdivisions by law pertaining to performing a public work and taking whatever action is necessary to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of our community, entering into contracts, incurring obligations, employment of permanent and temporary workers, utilizing of volunteer workers, renting equipment, acquiring and distributing with or without compensation of supplies, materials, and facilities, and appropriating and expending public funds. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor of the city of Palm Coast that, one, I, John Nets, Mayor of the city of Palm Coast, do hereby find that the circumstances set forth above do indeed exist, and that Hurricane Matthew poses a serious threat to the lives and property of the residents of the city of Palm Coast, and the state of local emergency is hereby declared, effective immediately, pertaining to all territory within the legal boundaries and jurisdictional limits of the city of Palm Coast. Two, the city manager has hereby delegated the power and authority to take all actions necessary to address the emergency situations that may arise as a result of the Hurricane Matthew in accordance with the provisions of state law and any emergency management procedures that may have been adopted by the city as well as by any state and federal disaster assistance loan procedures. Three, this proclamation shall become effective immediately upon its execution and should terminate automatically within seven days unless otherwise terminated or extended. Signed this fourth day of October, 2016, and I have signed it as Mayor of the city of Palm Coast. Pass that down to Virginia. We will have an update later on in the evening on status and what the city is doing to deal with it. Agenda item number three, resolution approving the final 2016 city primary election results. Mr. Landon, or is this Virginia?
This is Virginia.
Virginia.
This is just in our charter that we are required to provide a final certification of the results, and it's giving you the results of the primary election for Mayor-Elect Holland and Councilmember Cuff.
Any questions? Any comments? Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the consent agenda, items four through 14. Before we deal with them as a consent agenda, does anyone from the public wish to be heard on any of these items, either to ask further explanation or to have them removed from the agenda for more detailed council consideration? That's not public comment. This is just on the consent agenda. Seeing no one approach the podium?
Find that one for you.
That's agenda item number six. Pull agenda item number six. Any council member wish to pull any other agenda items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve agenda items four, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14?
So moved.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number six, Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is an interlocal agreement between us and the Flagler School District. The purpose of this is that, I think most of you have heard, that we have 10 fields out of Indian Trail Sports Complex, four of them on our property and six of them on the school district property. We have two restrooms, facilities on our property for the four fields and none on the six fields of the school district, and that is part of a number-one complaint with all the tournaments we have out there. So this agreement allows the city to build public restrooms in a convenient place for those six fields. It is on school district property, so they will own it. We will maintain it when their city functions, and they will maintain it for any school functions. And it's just a pretty boilerplate-type agreement to allow us to build these fields on their property. Obviously, this is a really, you know, good thing for our sports tournaments, and obviously us building those fields on school property is a benefit for the school district. The cost of this is approximately $250,000. It's one of two restrooms that we're building. You've already approved the project, and this is just that agreement between us and the school district to allow it to move forward.
Council questions? Seeing none, since this was removed from the consent agenda, anyone from the public wish to be heard on this agenda item?
Now, Palm Coast, I could build a house for $250,000, and you're going to build a toilet. I don't understand that. Why is it so expensive for somebody to go someplace and pee? I just don't understand it. People are building homes for $200,000, $300,000, and we're building toilets. That you had to explain to me.
Next speaker. No one approach the podium. We'll close public portion of the meeting. Get back to council, Mr. Landon. Other than the fact that this is a multiple facility with men's, women's, and family restrooms, and the fact that it has to be built to withstand public usage rather than a single family, any other comments?
Well, it's also a freestanding building, so we have to bring utilities into the facility from different locations depending on electric and water and sewer. And it's, yeah, it's not a single whole. It's multiple stalls for both men and women, so it's a fairly large facility. But if you've ever been out there and seen a long line, it's kind of like one of our festivals, so we're trying to avoid that, and it's just the estimate for the cost of construction of facility like this.
DiLorenzo.
There's a different building code when you build on school property. It's called SREF, SREF, and it's much more stricter than a residential building code. And that stricter building code, this is state building code, and that stricter building code comes with larger expenses.
I would imagine also there's ADA requirements that you would not otherwise have in other residential properties, private properties.
Any other council questions? Seeing none, is there a motion on this agenda item?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. This is the opportunity to speak on any item not on today's agenda. Please come up to the podium, give us your name, limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
I want to start to stay on the toilet thing. I was at the festival Saturday, and I was in between bathrooms, and for me to come up to the building or come all the way down to the standing bathroom is a little strong. And I think when you have something, we're going to have a lot of people, I think at least a couple of porta-potties out there would serve us well, because I made it, let's put it that way. But I'll tell you right now, I had a youngster telling me, "Come on, old man, hurry up."
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Legori has asked for an extra minute for his presentation or his comments.
With council consensus, give Mr. Legori extra time.
I rise this evening to read into the city record a tribute to Mrs. Martina McLean. On September 5th, 2016, Mrs. Marty McLean of Palm Coast passed away. Marty was a prominent member of St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton Church. Her life resume is replete with the words president, director, activist, chairman, and executive. Martina, or Marty, as she preferred to be called, was a nurse. Yet, what most citizens do not know is that Marty and Jim Canfield created the spark that ignited the Home Rule Coalition, which led to the incorporation of Palm Coast. It is the opinion of many that Marty is considered to be the mother of Palm Coast. Due to her vast civic and municipal experience, she was highly equipped with a superior knowledge base. Marty loved Palm Coast and dedicated herself to the incorporation effort. As co-chairman of the Home Rule Coalition, she had a heavy workload, recruiting members, selecting executive committee members, fundraising, legal requirements, and specific task assignments. Perhaps due to her medical training, Marty insisted on high levels of dedication, accuracy, and diplomacy. She was small in stature, yet possessed a firm command voice. She was respectful and compassionate, and yet if you made a serious mistake, she would take you apart with surgical precision. I first met Marty at a Bunnell Town Hall meeting that I attended to complain about the lack of information relative to the unincorporated Palm Coast. During a pause, a woman approached me and asked if I would like to join them. I asked, "Join what?" Marty said, "If you stop talking, I'll tell you." I said yes, little did I know how long-term my yes would be, five years. As co-chair, Marty was responsible for strategy, planning, meetings, and public presentations. As happens in to any executive groups, on occasions egos would surface, which created tensions and disagreements. Marty would quickly diffuse these moments by telling everyone to stop the nonsense and do your job. Noteworthy events during the incorporation process, the proposed distribution of landfill funds of $250,000 to Flagler County cities, Bunnell, Flagler Beach, Marineland. Prior to the incorporation vote, Marty was enraged over this move and commissioned me to attend the county commission meeting and plead the case to the commissioners to defer the vote until after the incorporation vote so Palm Coast could also receive funds. The meeting started at 5:30 PM and lasted until 2:30 AM in the morning. We won. I called Marty early in the morning to tell her the good news. Her response was, "What took you so long?" After the successful incorporation vote, there was a legal issue with the county over who owned the library in the public shopping center. Marty retained an attorney using her personal funds and won the legal battle. The first Palm Coast Council election had 20 candidates, which included nine mayoral candidates. Jim Canfield, Marty, and I were among the nine. The first mayoral candidate presentation was held at Flagler Auditorium. Each candidate presented their plans to a packed auditorium. I was seated next to Marty. As each candidate spoke, Marty whispered in my ear her critique of each presenter. Her running commentary was totally distracting to me, and I told her so. As I rose to give my presentation, she quietly said, "What's the matter, sonny? Can't handle more than one item at a time?" You had to love her. The city of Palm Coast was indeed fortunate to have a lady of her caliber in its corner. I also consider myself blessed for having met and worked with this extraordinary woman. Her dignity, charm, and brilliance have impacted my life in many ways. Thank you, Jack Council.
Thank you, Mr. Legori. Since so many residents of Palm Coast are relatively new to our community, there are probably few people who remember those pre-incorporation meetings and the discussions and the long discussions that took place, both pro and con. And yes, Marty was an integral part of that incorporation movement. Next speaker.
This is my husband, Steve, with me on Barrington Drive, and I would like to yield our time to Wayne Calvert, please.
Good evening, Council. My name is Wayne Perry. I'm homeless. I'm a 28-year resident of Flagler County, 27-year resident of Palm Coast, 10-year homeowner in Palm Coast. I've paid my taxes into this city. I've paid for this building that the city voted against, Mr. Landon. On September 22nd, I informed the Flagler Beach City Commission of Pottinger's Agreement, which allows the homeless to occupy any public land without being arrested. Mr. Reichman, are you familiar with Pottinger's Agreement?
I am not familiar with that agreement.
Pottinger's Agreement allows any homeless person to occupy any public property. That means outside of this building, I can use the property as an encampment, and we can set up a homeless encampment right out here. Pottinger's Agreement allows me to build a fire and cook outside this building. Pottinger's Agreement allows me to use your water spigot, get naked, and bathe myself outside of this building. Pottinger's Agreement allows me to pull down my pants and pee and poop in public without being arrested. This is to protect the homeless. It is a law that is in Miami, and it is a case law. The case law, as Mr. Reichman would advise you, would be if I filed a lawsuit against the city for unlawful arrest, I would win the case. The city attorney in Flagler Beach informed the Flagler Beach City Commission of this, and they then notified the Flagler Beach Police Department not to arrest me for sleeping in a park there. And I am going to ask that Mr. Landon do the same to Mr. Sheriff Manfree, to contact Sheriff Manfree and to let him know not to arrest any homeless person staying on public property. Are you prepared to do that, Mr. Landon?
Finish your comments, sir.
Excuse me? What's that?
Finish your comments.
Okay. Do you have a preferred park that the homeless set up our encampment in?
This is not a dialogue. This is your opportunity to make your decision.
Okay, this council is aware of numerous homeless encampments set up on private property as it is a topic long discussed. You know that there's homeless encampments on private property, yet you allow it to take place anyway, behind Mother Seaton, behind the library, behind Wendy's. In the best interest of our neighbors, this council should ask our city manager to go to the sheriff and have him remove those people from private property and put them on public property. Homeless people are citizens too, every single one of us. Maybe not all of them pay taxes like I do and did, but they're people too, and nobody is out here worrying about them. Everybody's talking about it. I've knocked on over 30 church doors. God's not answering the call. That's your responsibility as the government, to step up and fill the gap where the public's not. You need to govern the people. You need to be a strong council. You don't need to have a charter amendment to change to become a strong council. You're a weak council now, and he has all of the pull, but you're a strong council if you use...
15 seconds.
Excuse me?
15 seconds left.
That's only for three minutes?
Three minutes.
They yielded six minutes to me. I got nine minutes.
No, sir.
That is...
They each can have three minutes. They cannot yield their time to you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Landon, are you prepared to provide discretionary funds to provide me with shelter?
This is not a dialogue, sir.
I need shelter. I'm a 10-year taxpayer.
Thank you very much. We'll get back to you.
Okay, so I can go sleep in a park and I'm not going to be arrested?
We'll get back to you, sir.
So I can sleep in a park and I'm not going to get arrested?
Thank you, sir.
I just want to make you just find out. I mean, are we going to file a lawsuit against the city?
We'll get back to you, sir. Thank you very much.
You sue the county all the time.
Next speaker.
Homeless. Served this county for 20 years. Came back to serve in our country for six years.
Next speaker.
Known this guy 25 years.
Good evening, George Mayo, Palm Coast. I'm here to talk about drones and what the rules and regulations are, you know, going in concerning them. Recently, I was at a restaurant on A1A in Flagler Beach, saw a gentleman get out of his car in the parking lot of the restaurant, launch a drone, had a video screen in front of him, computer, whatever it might have been, following the drone. He then crossed the street, and I could see that he was following the drone as it went up and down the beach, obviously, you know, looking at people on the beach. I brought this up to the county commissioners, and they said, "Well, that would be Flagler Beach's concern because it wasn't their property," but they were going to look into it for their own beaches and their own property. I'd like to... They are currently going to meet, if not already, with FAA administrators and other officials about what the rules and regulations are for drones. There are some set down already, but you can't fly them above 500 feet, et cetera. I asked them to find out if you see somebody with a drone, they are supposed to have a license. Are they required to carry that with them? As you do when you drive a car, you're supposed to have a driver's license. And three things happened this past week. The city of Phoenix just set off limits a 30,000-acre nature preserve from drones. Two, Miami Beach, a drone fell out of the sky and hit a woman in the head laying on the beach, causing injuries. And three, it was in USA Today this week that three companies have come out with new mini-drones. One company has it so that they can fixate on a person, and when you do that, that drone will follow that person wherever they go. So whether it's at a beach, or if somebody decides to use it to follow a child going to and from school, this is kind of disconcerting. I'm hoping that the city will look into this and to file some kind of regulations for the city property itself, or where they're allowed and not allowed, if they want to get in contact with the county commissioners and maybe instead of duplicating efforts while they are meeting with the FAA and other people, possibly look into that, because everybody wants their privacy, and it's a coming thing and something we can't avoid. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jack Cal, Palm Coast. On this drone business, it's funny, it was brought up at the meeting last night, and I had to get up and say it. My son's house was hit by a drone, and it not only hit by the house, it also hit his car, and it demolished his gazebo. So, you know, just thinking, if that drone...
They yielded six minutes to me. I got nine minutes.
No, sir. No, sir. They each can have three minutes. They cannot yield their time to you, sir.
Mr. Landon, are you prepared to provide discretionary funds to provide me with shelter?
This is not a dialogue, sir.
I need shelter. I'm a 10-year taxpayer.
Thank you very much. We'll get back to you.
Okay, so I can go sleep in a park and I'm not going to be arrested?
We'll get back to you, sir.
So I can sleep in a park and I'm not going to get arrested?
Thank you, sir.
I just want to make you just find out. I mean, are we going to file a lawsuit against the city?
We'll get back to you, sir. Thank you very much.
You sue the county all the time.
Next speaker.
Homeless. Served this county for 20 years. Came back to serve in our country for six years.
Next speaker.
Known this guy 25 years.
Good evening, George Mayo, Palm Coast. I'm here to talk about drones and what the rules and regulations are, you know, going in concerning them. Recently, I was at a restaurant on A1A in Flagler Beach, saw a gentleman get out of his car in the parking lot of the restaurant, launch a drone, had a video screen in front of him, computer, whatever it might have been, following the drone. He then crossed the street and I could see that he was following the drone as it went up and down the beach, obviously, you know, looking at people on the beach. I brought this up to the county commissioners and they said, "Well, that would be Flagler Beach's concern because it wasn't their property," but they were going to look into it for their own beaches and their own property. I'd like to-- they are currently going to meet, if not already, with FAA administrators and other officials about what the rules and regulations are for drones. There are some set down already, but you can't fly them above 500 feet, et cetera. I asked them to find out if you see somebody with a drone, they are supposed to have a license. Are they required to carry that with them? As you do when you drive a car, you're supposed to have a driver's license. And three things happened this past week. The city of Phoenix just set off limits a 30,000-acre nature preserve from drones. Two, Miami Beach, a drone fell out of the sky and hit a woman in the head laying on the beach, causing injuries. And three, it was in USA Today this week that three companies have come out with new mini drones. One company has it so that they can fixate on a person and when you do that, that drone will follow that person wherever they go. So whether it's at a beach or if somebody decides to use it to follow a child going to and from school, this is kind of disconcerting. I'm hoping that the city will look into this and to find some kind of regulations for the city property itself or where they're allowed and not allowed. If they want to get in contact with the county commissioners and maybe instead of duplicating efforts while they are meeting with the FAA and other people, possibly look into that because everybody wants their privacy and it's a coming thing and something we can't avoid. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jack Cal, Palm Coast. On this drone business, it's funny, it was brought up at the meeting last night and I had to get up and say it. My son's house was hit by a drone. And it not only hit by the house, it also hit his car and it demolished his gazebo. So, you know, just thinking, if that drone would have hit my son or my daughter-in-law, it could have almost killed him. So we do need some kind of regulations with these things flying around and the way we can do it. You know, they're not toys, that's for sure. This drone happened to have a camera and something else, whatever it is, all these new fangled things. But they can fly over and see what you're doing. So you have no more privacy when these things are flying over. And I just read in the paper and this company is starting to produce them, you know, like a thousand a day, at 1,100 bucks a piece. That's a lot of money.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. Next speaker.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. This question I'm going to ask is, and I know the mayor traditionally answers the questions, but if he would be so kind as to let the council answer the question. I've only been here for a year and I've seen a lot of mayors and I've seen a lot of council people in my 40 years of coming to council meetings. But, and I'm not saying it because he came from the north, but Mayonnaise is probably the best mayor that I've ever seen. Okay? He sits, he listens, he may not totally agree with everything that everybody gets up and says, but he is probably one of the most honest politicians I know. He's straightforward, he'll tell it to you exactly the way it's supposed to be, not the way you want to hear it. Now, I know his administration or his term is coming to a close and that's a crime. So I would like the council to entertain the idea of making him a mayor-- I'm going to destroy the word-- where you're the mayor for like life.
Emeritus.
Thank you. I knew I would have destroyed the word. But I would like--
Let me just interrupt you. Emeritus comes from Latin. E means out and meritus means ought to be.
Well--
That's a joke, but--
In this particular case, the Latin definition is definitely wrong. So I would like the vice mayor and the rest of the city council to consider bestowing upon the honor to Mayonnaise because she's done a great job. And I'm quite sure that Melissa Holland will try to fill that big set of shoes up there, but Mayonnaise, you've done a great job.
Thank you very much. Thank you. But to say I've done a great job is to say that I've had a lot of good people to work with. This is not something anyone does by themselves. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Ronnie Burris and I'm the business agent at Local 630 and I represent the public employees of Palm Coast. And I'm here tonight to say thank you to Mr. Landon and you for allowing us to get a contract that is workable, something we can build on, something that we're going to be able to work in the future together with. This is, you know, this is not the 1920s where we saw when strikes went out and they beat people up and do all that. In Florida, we don't have that right. We don't do that and I don't think that's the right way of handling things. My members here in Palm Coast are proud to live in Palm Coast, work in Palm Coast, and are taxpayers in Palm Coast also. They're not asking for anything free. They're not asking to be able to sit on their behinds and do nothing. They come in here for a fair day's work, for a fair day's pay. That's all they ask. I believe that with the administration's help, with Mr. Landon's help and Ms. Collins' help, we were able to achieve that and brought some things to the table that were good for our employees. Because they're the ones that make the roads beautiful, they're the ones that do all the work and make this a great place when we have visitors and we have people drive down the roads. They're the ones that out there have made it. We look forward, I look forward to working with the city council, with the administration, management, and everybody else to resolve issues and work together and come together to make Palm Coast the best place to work, the best place to live, and everybody here be proud of where they live and the beautiful place it is. That's what I, as a business manager, wants. That's what I preach to my members. I don't preach, "Go in and try to stir up trouble." I just go tell them to go in and do your job, show up on time, and leave. We're not always going to agree. I understand that. But just as an example, I received an email from an HR director today in Levy County that I represent those workers. She sent me an email and said, "Mr. Burris, I would like to ask you Christmas and Christmas Eve in 2017 falls on Sunday and Monday, and we would like to observe those holidays on Monday and Tuesday. What is your opinion of this?" I wrote back--
10 seconds.
I wrote back and I said, "Fine with me. That's great." Why would I have an issue with that? I'm not here to try to work against people. I'm here to work with people. We just need those, that kind of relationship with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Next speaker. So we don't approach the podium, go back to council. Let's take them in order. Staff, there's been a comment, question, a request for additional restroom facilities when we have those large festivals. That's something I'd like staff to look at. If we need to add a couple of porta-potties, that's certainly doable.
Yes, we usually have them. They tried to do something a little different with it being out on the street and I don't think it worked probably as well, so we'll take a hard look at it.
We learn from experience.
Yep.
Mr. Reichman, the issue of the homeless, I'm not familiar with that.
Neither am I, sir. And I'm familiar with--
Please get back to city council with your interpretation, what the rights and responsibilities of the city are under these kind of issues.
I have read it and I would like further interpretation.
Yeah, and I'm very familiar with other cases and not particular. First of all, you don't refer to a case, a law case, as an appellate ruling is an agreement. I think he called it Pottinger's Agreement. So there may be some--
Pottingers.
Pottingers? Oh, okay, I misheard him. Regardless, there's appellate court cases that prescribe certain limitations in the powers of local governments to deal with vagrancy and the other impacts associated with that. Not necessarily just homelessness, but I would tell you that some of the examples that the gentleman gave would not be allowed and could be regulated.
I think that--
Out of health issues and things like that.
The agreement is post-lawsuit. It's an agreement with the city of Miami Beach, I believe.
And that may very well be the case, but we're not governed by agreement between one group and another city. We're governed by case law, be it state or federal, and I'm more than happy to report back on what those specific--
At our next workshop, please give us a thorough update. And while you're at it, you might as well look into drone regulation. I agree, it's a classic example of technology staying ahead of the legal system.
And I can tell you just briefly, we'll get into more depth at the next meeting, but there was a recent article in the monthly publication put out by the Florida Legal Cities about drones. Some of you may have already seen that, just came out a couple days ago. And you've got FAA regulations that place limitations on how they may be operated, but they're looking from, the federal rules are looking more to safety in the airways. There's a recent state law dealing with what the gentleman indicated, there's a recent state law that was adopted that said that you can't operate drones in residential areas with cameras because of the privacy concerns. And that was just passed in this legislative session. And there are a growing number of cities and throughout the state of Florida that are beginning to adopt their own regulation of drones for some of the many reasons that were expressed here tonight.
And just as a way of historical reference for council, a number of years ago, I think before any of you were seated, I know before any of you were seated, the issue came up not about drones, but these model airplanes, the gasoline-powered model airplanes. And there was a council member who was adamant that they should be allowed to fly in our public parks. I'm not sure we ever enacted anything on it, but I felt it was dangerous then and I suspect that it's dangerous now, but you'll let us know, Mr. Reichman.
I'd be more concerned with someone being able to fly into my backyard and see what's going on. You know, my grandkids are back there. I don't want someone with a camera back there.
I'll skip over the next gentleman's comments, so thank you very much. I alluded to it earlier. This city is what it is, not because of any one person or any one council or any one administrator. This city is the result of work of many, many, many people. City council can sit here and set policy, but eventually we pass that on to the city manager and he in turn passes it on to our workers and they're the ones who make it happen. So to our union representative and to the members of the unions, we always want to bargain in good faith and we are very grateful for the quality of work that they do. I think by and large, they are above and beyond the call of duty. Okay, discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Cuff?
Just one brief comment, sort of following up on what you were just saying, Mr. Mayor. At our last business meeting, we appointed some new members to the planning board, Planning and Land Development Review Board. But in that process, two long-serving members, Ray Henderson and Mike Beebe, left the board. And particularly in Ray's case, I believe he was a member of the original PLDRB when it was constituted right after city's incorporation. And I just wanted, and in Mike Beebe's case, I know that we're going to be looking at the landscape and tree protection revision soon, which was a major piece of work that board worked on with staff and the community over the last few months. And Mike, I know from personal experience, devoted, I can't tell you how many hours of his professional time as a landscape architect and the chairman to that effort. So I did want to mention that for the public record and I would hope that there would be some, you know, suitable commemoration for both of those members either at a council meeting or a future PLDRB meeting to make note of their service to the city.
Thank you. Virginia, take note. Anything else, Mr. Cuff?
Nope, that's all.
Lee Lorenzo?
I'll give you an update on what occurred at the TPO last Wednesday, if you didn't read it in the newspaper. So as we had previously discussed, the Volusia County had a project they wished to get approved through the TPO process, generally outside the rules of the TPO process as the project hadn't previously been ranked or submitted in any way to the TPO. And it was a bridge project, 50-year-old bridge, had been repaired one time over those 50 years to the cost of $125,000. Obviously not enough to sustain it. That was about five years ago. At the TPO, we were represented well. Former CAC member and current Flagler Beach Commissioner Rick Bellhumor spoke in our favor. Mr. Reichman, of course, was there to speak. Former council member and current CAC member Alan Peterson was there to speak. And Commissioner Revels from Flagler County was on our side as well as Flagler Beach Chair, Marshall Shoup, all of which were on our side. But we could not put together enough votes, and there were other municipalities that joined us as well, in particular DeBarry, Daytona Beach, and a few other small cities. We couldn't put enough votes together to beat back Volusia County and their might. And they approached it in a very interesting way. If you remember from the previous discussion, they came to the TCC and CAC meetings with two choices for those bodies and, well, we could, you know, spend the money this way or we could spend the money that way, both being TPO dollars and not any other options. They didn't give them any other options. The week in between, there was an opinion from the TPO attorney saying that if you proceed down this road, essentially you're going to break your own rules, so really you should, if you wish to go that way, you should change the rules and then put yourself in the correct procedural position before you made the decision. But they didn't have the luxury of that. Both the TCC and the CAC approved the project or recommended the project to the TPO board. But how it was presented at the TPO board was, Volusia County essentially said, "We have the money to do this project, but it'll mean taking away from our three other local projects. One or two of them would have to be delayed and then they could move those dollars to fix this bridge." But instead, instead of using their own dollars, they kind of raided the TPO and put one of our projects, if not in jeopardy this year, at least delayed somewhat. We'll see how that works out. There might be some options there. But Deltona Commissioner Nebicht just voted with Volusia County and they put him in a very difficult position. They basically said, "Well, there's two projects in Deltona, so one of them, or maybe both of them, is going to be postponed if we spend out of local dollars." So of course he voted along with the Volusia County council members who are at the TPO, one of which I had never seen at a TPO meeting before. And they had enough, it's a weighted vote at the TPO and they had enough weighted vote to defeat us roughly 65-35 or somewhere around there. So we gave it a valiant effort, I think. We made lots of good points. There was good dialogue from other municipalities that were concerned about how this was being approached by Volusia County, but in the end, they were too strong for us in this case. I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add?
Well, I can give you an update. I think you did a great job of explaining to it the situation. Really sad that you'd have a, basically the big guy in the schoolyard saying that, "Well, we don't care what the rules are, we're going to do it anyways because we have the votes." And that's actually what happened. But the update is that the TPO executive director has sent just this evening an email responding to our request to confirm something that was said at the TPO board meeting and that is that they thought they had enough money to cover all of those projects that were being advanced. If you recall, the advance list was the list that these dollars were earmarked for through the TPO process. They were designated for these as went through the process. We had the lowest-ranked project that was part of what was supposed to happen this coming year and it was a one project that was going to get killed as a result of this. But they have worked it out with FDOT. They indicated that, yes, there will be enough money to cover all of the advanced projects now. So FDOT is coming up with some additional dollars to fund everything. Very common to try to appease the whole situation. Don't, the dollars they're coming up with, as I understand it, is what they call advance funding? In other words, it's a loan?
Well, be clear now, not a loan to us.
No, a loan to the TPO. So the TPO is going to, the following year, have to pay it back or somehow, I don't know what the details are. But the bottom line is, is a million six, $1,600,000 of projects that were designated for all of us is now going to this bridge that was not part of the TPO project list at all. And although we will not see a delay in our three projects for this year, that's still a million six that will not be available for all of our projects, not just Palm Coast, but all of Volusia and Palm Coast. So it's still obviously disturbing. Not a whole lot we can do other than what we've already-- Not a whole lot we can do, other than what we've already done, and that is ask for written confirmation that our projects were not going to be delayed, and they've got that. And then we've also talked to our lobbyists in Tallahassee to ask the state for confirmation that they're not going to somehow punish the TPO for not following the rules. But other than that, there is no appeal. You know, you can take them to court, but that's not a good solution for any of us. So, you know, it's kind of, it is what it is, but we'll keep trying to see how we can participate in a fair manner, and obviously it's-
Does set a very disturbing precedent, however.
And that was discussed, Mr. Mayor. That was brought up repeatedly. And I, I'm sorry, I can't sit here and not say a few words. Councilmember DeLorenzo was very generous in his characterization of how the meeting went, very politically correct, but the fact is, is that it was made very clear by the TPO's own attorney, by their executive director, and by comments that were relayed through the executive director from both the state of Florida and the federal government, they'd adopted procedures, specific policies and procedures for how their funds, these federal and state funds, were to be allocated. These procedures were adopted as recently as January of 2016. And these annual procedures, which Mr. Landon referred to, create a process. It's the same process that has existed since the very inception of the TPO. And it was very clear, there was no disagreement by anyone that these policies were being not just ignored, but flat-out violated. And that's almost the term that was used by all the folks. And Volusia County said, "Well, this is a one-time. This is just a one-time situation."
Till the next time.
But let's be very clear. The reason that Volusia County made this raid for this $1.6 million is because they had a, they had a bridge, as Mr. Councilmember DeLorenzo indicated, hadn't been repaired or any significant meaningful repairs in 50 years. They went out for bid, and it was $3.2 million more than they thought they were going to have to pay for it. Now, I'm here to tell you, everyone in that room had projects where they've gone out to bid, where they've had important projects, projects that were very important, they're constituents, that came in more than the amount that they had budgeted. And Volusia County said at this meeting, "We have monies. We can fund this ourselves, but we'd rather use your monies than our monies." So that's how it played out, and it was unfortunate. And as Mr. Landon said, that's $1.6 million that's gone, and it's gone to one of the members in violation of the rules.
I'd just add that Volusia County basically, Volusia County council members on the TPO basically said, "This is a TPO policy. We set the policy. We can change the policy if we want to, and that's why we're able to do this." And my rebuttal to that was, then why do we even have a policy? Because if we're all following this rule, but we can just bring a project at any time and advance it in this manner, then what's the point of having the whole system? It doesn't really make sense. But, I don't know. We have to get a little bit stronger on this, and I met with the Chamber of Commerce on this this morning, and they asked, "How can we help?" Well, we have several vacancies in some of the other cities on the Citizens Advisory Council. We have ours appointed, and Flagler County has theirs appointed, but there's a vacancy in Flagler Beach, there's a vacancy in Benel, and maybe Beverly Beach as well, and maybe even a couple more spaces that are available. We need to have citizens engaged so they can take the argument, they can support our argument ahead of time, so the recommendation is denied when it comes to the TPO rather than is advanced from the CAC.
Mrs. DeLorenzo, I want to thank you. You've been doing a wonderful job there. This is not your doing, but this is the classic example of the bully in the room, so. Anything else?
No, thank you.
And Shipley?
I do, just two things. If you, I don't know what you're going to say when it's your turn, but if you have a chance to give us an update on Holland Park-
You can do that.
-because it's my district, everyone calls me. And the safety for the bus stops. I don't know if we have anything planned to bring that up again for a workshop to see if the pads worked, and if they didn't work, look into the next thing that we want to do for the bus stops.
I guess that would include also the signage or the engagement to keep people away from the stop signs.
Yes. Okay. Let me start with the bus stop one. I didn't come prepared for that one, and, but yeah, we do need, we owe you another update, so I will bring that back with an update as to where we are with the signage and continue to monitor the pads we had out there and how, if we've made any improvements over what happened last school year. Holland Park, I am very excited to report the great progress that's being made out there at this point. You know, the city has, in essence, taken over the project for the most part. We have contracted directly with Vertigo, one of our local landscapers in town. I talked to the owner of the company Friday, and he said, "Boys, like the difference of night and day," was his quote. That means it's time to go home, or hurricanes already hit, but-
I think that's example of the difference between night and day.
Yeah, there you go.
I think you may be taking this LEED certification a little too far.
I suspect our new custodian started yesterday, so I, they may have, that's just speculation. Should I continue on?
Yes.
There you go.
But there be light.
You know, a lot of sod, almost it's all been soweded, landscaping's happening, all the irrigation is in. We've subcontracted with the theme wall company now, and they've got that project started. That was another major, critical area. Our crews have been out doing demolition, some of the regrading and all of those, and it is a, it is starting to look like it's going to happen versus what we were seeing before, like nothing was ever going on. But if you, and I'm not encouraging the public to do this because it is a construction site, but it is, it's starting to really look like a park. We're going to, I've asked Cindy to try to get the word out of some of the progress that's being made, so that people know that it's, ever since two or three weeks ago that we've really kind of taken over the project, the major progress we've made. So it's actually, at this point, a very positive story. And people ask me, "When is it going to be finished?" I've lied so many times, I'm not telling that lie anymore.
You an absolute deadline of November 15th.
We, I can tell you, it is high, high priority, and I've authorized overtime and everything else we can make. Realizing all this work that we're doing, we're taking it out of the contractor's fees. So I hear the rumor that, "Oh, we're over budget." No, we're actually under budget because we're charging them $1,000 a day, and everything that we're doing that they were supposed to do, we're deducting that from our payment to them. So this is not a project that we plan on going over budget. The embarrassing part is how long it's taken them to move it forward and the delays.
Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing more, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda, and I'd like an update on the situation of our hurricane friend.
Yes, that's really the only other thing. I had on my list, first of all, Matthew is something that we all need to be very concerned about. The 5 o'clock update from National Hurricane Center is moving further west again. Their prediction is further west, and that is not good news for us. Right now, it looks like it's, the track is going to hug the Florida coast pretty tight. It's way too early to tell, but it is, it could go even further west, which would be more of a direct hit, so we all need to take it very serious. The people in the back room, we've had our discussions about making sure we're ready to go, and that we have a variety of things that we do to top off gas, to Cindy starting to get word out about sandbags and the like. The governor has gone on the TV and expressed concerns. Mayor's expressed concerns tonight. Those concerns, everybody needs to take very serious. I understand there's no water, there's a lot of things in the grocery stores that are gone. We've actually had some gas stations that closed down today because they ran out of gas. That's not necessarily a bad thing because people do need to be prepared. We're hoping that all those things get replenished tonight, and they get the deliveries, and the gas stations get back open. Right now, the prediction, and once again, you never know for sure, is that this should be really affecting us late Thursday, probably more into Friday. The, tomorrow, we will start having discussions about whether or not voluntary or mandatory evacuations are required. We're already having conversations about rimfire being the shelter, if people need to shelter. They will divide the rimfire into three sections. One of them will be a pet section for those people that have pet needs, another one will be for special needs individuals, and the other one will be general population. All of that taking place at the different buildings at rimfire. So those steps are already taking place. Superintendent called me today, and we've gone out and helped him with some of the preparation for that, and the county's been involved in that also. You know, if we do have to ask people to evacuate, that will be a major issue for us tomorrow and into Thursday. It's, once again, we are not saying that will happen. A lot of factors, high tide, the surge, you know, and we're not talking about just the beach. You start getting into our saltwater canal areas, there's some areas there that if the storm comes at just the wrong time with high tide and the storm surge and all those, so those are factors that emergency management will be looking at and will be taking steps. We will keep city council updated, and more importantly, continue to communicate with the community as to things that they need to be aware of. I'll give a couple of suggestions right now, or things that are important in our community. The pep tank areas. If we do get to a point where we don't have electricity, the pep tanks don't, pumps in the pep tanks don't work, you really need to reduce amount of water you use at that point. If you don't have electricity and you have a pep tank, those are little tips that we try to get out to people that are part of this. There's obviously a number of others. From our standpoint, our emergency operations center is our main fire station, Fire Station 25, and this facility does not have a generator, so we, just like our last city offices did not have a generator. So our operations will move there. They've already started that process. There'll be some of the call centers over there, just so we're prepared, but that's our central location. We anticipate the county EOC, the large facility, being, going into Level 1, which is the highest level, tomorrow if needed, and then that way, they'll be coordinating activities out of that facility also throughout the whole county. So bottom message, or the real important message, is this one, we need to take very serious. You always hope that it goes out further east and stays out in the ocean, but we can't count on that, and we're anticipating a major impact on us, and we're operating accordingly. This is, you know, we have a lot of people have been here through these, and they're very prepared, but we're making sure that we try to think of all the needs. The other thing we're already talking about is, once it's gone, if it does hit us and does impact us, then that cleanup and all those. So, Mayor, that's probably the best summary I can give you.
Just one thing I'd like to suggest to people listening. You may have a neighbor, could be a widow, could be a widower, could be somebody with some physical challenges. While you're doing your own preparations, think about your neighbor also, and see if there's something you can do to reach out. This is a community, and one of the characteristics of community is working together. So if there's somebody on your block, next door, across the street, who needs a little extra help, try to find a little extra time to do that also. Madam Vice Mayor?
Listen to her, Jim.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.